Oh, your name?
My name is Jay White.
My name is Jay White.
The existing cities that started to contract with, they were on a six-year plan to pay and seven years for a month or two, so the cats will have to do this as well.
Yeah, some of the graders are asking about, yeah, they came with fuel, oil filters, service and all that.
For six years?
Yes.
So then we wouldn't see this, so this is paid upfront, or is this amortized over six years?
Not for the least.
Is that the same equipment they're looking at reinvesting in, or are they getting different graders?
What's your name, Elizabeth?
We just approved three caterpillar graders today, switching those out with caterpillars.
Is that what you're using now, caterpillar?
Sani.
Is that what you're, oh, Sani?
That's what we're using now. We just approved this morning to, the first three in the rollout plan will be replaced with a caterpillar.
Are they a better grader, you think? Every, every brand has its issue. Go ahead, sir, your name?
My name is Tim Hatfield. My question is, the taxes keep going up a little, okay? I understand, you know, prices increase, but we keep getting new equipment pretty regular. But in our area, you don't see that equipment. The ditches are not mowed at all. We see a road grader maybe once a month. We're paying these taxes to get this maintenance done, and it's not being done. We come by where the cutter's at, at 9:20 this morning, it's sitting at home. Nothing's getting done, but yet everything keeps, you know, increasing.
Well, if you call Roden Bridge and report these things and you're not getting satisfaction, call your commissioner.
They've done it over and over and over.
Have you called us?
I've talked to Cory, yes.
And we've called the county lot.
I talked to you about a year ago about it.
And we've called the county lot over and over, and the ditches in our area, even some of the paved roads are not being touched. And like I said, we come by at 9:20 this morning, cutter's sitting at home. That's my complaint, when we keep, when we keep paying the higher taxes and we get new equipment pretty regular and everything else, but we don't ever see it.
He drives up and down the road, but he doesn't cut.
And that new cutter, I don't, I'm not sure it had to be expensive, but it's just not being used in our area, and it lives two miles from us.
Can we see the truck into that corner?
Okay.
Yep, okay. Ma'am?
I'm Elizabeth Chapelier, and I have a similar complaint because I live right off of state line, and there's a huge sign that says county maintenance does not cover the road, and it's a nightmare driving down that road. So what are my taxes going for when you keep raising the taxes and there's no maintenance on that road? So, I mean, what am I paying for? It's a nightmare to navigate that road, especially when you've got big semis, and it's, there's, you can go off the road so easily there when you've got two big trucks going by each other. So-
Where do you live, sorry?
I'm off of state line in Rivers Edge.
So Rivers Edge going back north, there's a certain point there, once you get to the S curve, that the county maintenance stops and come to private road?
Yeah, but the whole state line is not managed by the county. It's awful.
Well, I don't understand.
All of state line road is not managed by the county, and it's a nightmare to navigate. And I have to drive it every day to get back to my home. I'm at the back of state line. So what am I paying for?
State line's paved, isn't it?
Barely. It's falling apart. The edges of it are falling apart. It's almost like Kansas and Oklahoma said, oh, you're in the middle of our border, we're not going to take care of it. But I'm on the Kansas side. So I just, again, I'm, you guys, the county's raising taxes 21%. It's like, what am I paying for? And I'm considered county.
Well, it's not all two roads. I mean, we have limited resources, and not everybody gets benefit at roads. All the incorporated areas, they pay the same county tax you do, but they don't really have any advantage of the, very minimal advantage unless they drive the roads in the county. What are some of these things going for? It's unbelievable what it takes to run 150-some employees and the different entities, but you're getting a prosecuting attorney that's been more aggressive, and that's a good thing, but that also means more trials and more jury expense. Like you, the farm, your fertilizer and gas and diesel hasn't gone down, neither has ours for Roden Bridge and the other departments. We had a 15% increase in our property casualty insurance. That alone was $52,000, $55,000 on top of a big premium. Just same as your household budgets. They just, prices haven't gone down, they go up. And one thing that we've done the last probably four or five years is spend a lot of reserves to keep the mill living. Cory has said for the last couple of years, it's going to get us because we're going to have to, we're going to have to start living for the taxes rather than pulling from those reserves. And this is a year that it's happening.
So there's a-
Wait, just a minute, Lori-
There's a lot of truck traffic on state line right now from that government where they're reclaiming ground, taking, I call it the playground because it makes no sense to me what they're doing. But there's, I counted 10 trucks in a row going down state line, coming back up Star Road, right where we're driving our tractors all summer long. Do you guys get reimbursed for any of the damage they're doing?
They were in here right before this hearing started, and they've made it a point, this was the second time in recent months to have a better working relationship. They've sometimes not been with Roden Bridge superintendent over this very thing of not-
I actually had to put my four-wheel drive in on my pickup last winter on the county road because they were in that bad a shape, and I almost got stuck on Star Road.
We've heard that, I mean, from others. I agree.
So what action did they, what action did they claim to take? You said that you, they were just in here prior to our meeting. So saying I'm going to do something and paying to do something are two different actions. So what action was confirmed that they agreed to do?
Well, the discussion we had about roads today was on southeast 90th where they're doing a project, and as we all agreed, it doesn't make sense to go in there now while they're still working on the project. But they have been doing little bits of remediation along the way, so the roads supposedly are passable, but-
So I'm hearing nothing?
Yeah.
That's, I'm not trying to be, I'm just going to be blunt. What I heard was, they came in, they gave you smoke and mirrors, they're going to go on to their next project, and Laura's going to be stuck with a road she can't drive down, and the young lady in the front's going to be stuck with a road that she can't drive down. So that's not doing anything.
I don't think that's non-driveable. I haven't been there in a long time.
Non-driveable and not being fixed to what the condition it was prior to the reclaim is two different issues. If a road is in, say, condition five before we start any projects, and due to the fact the project starts and we have all these heavy trucks going up and down that road, and it becomes a, you know, level one road when they're complete, it's still a level one road whether it's drivable or not. It was not in the condition that it was prior to the construction work. And I think we see that all over the county.
Whenever Seven Highway was repaired in various places, we saw that on the county road. They'll go out before the construction project begins and take notes and identify the condition of the property, and it is up to us to enforce it, and we're just saying that we're going to do that. Somebody else have a comment? A question?
Well, like state line road where we live is like a half a mile paved to half a mile country, a half a mile paved to half a mile gravel. It's crazy going into Baxter. Who's responsible for maintaining that? Which state?
What are you talking about?
State line going from Trace to Baxter?
I'm talking to county right now.
So Cherokee County maintains state line from 69 Highway going east.
Okay.
Ottawa County maintains state line road from 69 going west. That's the agreement that Cherokee County and Ottawa County's had, most thing ever.
So we're, we're east in Oklahoma's west?
Yes.
Like from Baxter to Pitcher, basically?
Yes.
Okay. It's terrible.
That road's never been there.
I know.
So is her option then to go to you guys, to talk to those other county commissioners about getting that better, like, you know, holding them accountable, or, you know, what's her option as a taxpayer on that?
Going to the west?
Yeah.
From 69 West? Yeah, that's the agreement that, it's my understanding, that's been the agreement with Cherokee County and Ottawa County.
So we need to go to Ottawa County and ask them?
Yep.
Okay.
Which I can, one of us can help you navigate that, because we need to be in that discussion.
Now, are you going to require these truck, these companies to get these roads back in shape again once, before they leave?
Yeah, so I spent all Saturday morning out there driving those roads. I spent a big portion of Saturday afternoon talking to some people with the companies. So their grader operator just couldn't quit because that was the agreement. You know, we can't afford to take the grader in that area and just support their project. That's not fair to the people that pay for that service. Supposedly he's back. We'll see.
Okay.
I was out there Saturday, drove for probably three hours, all out in that area, visiting with them on the phone. We've had a lot of legal discussions with them early on because frankly, the EPA is federal, and they basically told us to get bent in the beginning. They didn't want to sign a road use agreements, and they was going to do whatever they wanted to do and basically get over it. And we have fought them, gave, been, lots of communications with them. They've not been easy to deal with at all. Last, I think it was last fall, I went out there to survey the roads and come up to a guy on Swally Road south, Star that was stuck in the middle of the road. And then the conversations that day were not very nice.
That would be my other point of contact on this, because to Cory's point, there's been a lot of conflict between us and EPA on-
Should I call my national senator and congressman?
That was going to be my suggestion, and I'd be communicating with Congressman Schmidt and Senator Marshall Moran at their offices out of Pittsburgh would be helpful on that.
And that would help us out greatly.
Anyone else? And Ross?
Just for the record, my name's Ross King. First, I do want to thank you guys for having the meetings and, you know, being the people in charge. You guys get a hard time all the time, I'm sure. So I don't come to very many of these. I do want to say I appreciate the work you guys.
Thank you.
To follow that up on, when it comes to meetings like this where there are taxes specifically going to be talked about, and, you know, anytime you guys vote on taxes, I would ask, you know, that you guys consider maybe moving those meetings specifically regarding taxes to the evenings. You may or may not get more people, but you definitely have, they have more opportunity to come, you know, because there's a large percentage of our, you know, constituents that aren't able to come unless they take off work. I don't really think that's fair to them. So I just appreciate if you guys could consider that. Not saying anything about the regular meetings or anything like that.
Ross, just to add to that, we did that very thing last year. We had Devil Hellwig and one other person.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That gives them, you guys can say, hey, we put it on a time where you guys could all come, but you didn't come. Right now, they really don't, you know, we put it at a time where a lot of them would have to take off work to come. So it's just taking away any excuses they have, is what I'm saying. For me personally, this probably works better, but for the majority of the county, it would probably work better.
From our previous history, and then we did that one time before, at your moment on this address several years ago, and I think we did it upstairs.
We've, we've had, you know, we've had requests to have commission meetings in the evenings so more people could attend. We've tried that, and I think we did that, and one, nobody showed up.
Yeah, it didn't last time.
Complaint we got about the meetings was, right now, it's right in harvest, and none of the farmers could show because of their harvest.
I would just say look at the turnout here and look at the turnout for two times we've done it, but I'm open to anything. I'm just here one more year, I'll vote one more time on this, but I'm open to any suggestion.
Also, anytime you got a question, call. I mean, that's part of our job, just call. I visit with people every day. You just bring up subject, and we'll probably discuss it. So if you have a question, call.
I have called the county lot several times, got the secretary, and asked her if they would please mow our ditches, clean it. There's enough gravel in one side of my driveway that would fill a dump truck. Do they mess with that? No.
Our ditches haven't been cleaned in, I couldn't tell you how long.
And do they cut? No. And all she tells me is, well, you don't know what they're doing, know what they're not doing. She's very, very hateful.
I would just remind everyone, if you've called one time and didn't get a callback or an answer, call your commissioner.
I have talked to Cory about this before.
When we just have to call again.
And I've called to talk to Mr. Zook or whatever his name is, and she refused, you know, well, he's busy or he's on the phone, which, he may be, but, you know, it's like, we're tired of our taxes going up and not getting nothing, nothing done.
And we pay for the road maintenance, but it's not, it's not being done down in that area. I grow a lot of that corner from Baxter to 69 and up to Clem, all in that corner bound in there. There's no mowing being done, there's no, very little grading, the ditches are not being cleaned. I mean, no road maintenance whatsoever.
Well, in fact, there is a sign on our road that says road may flood. The weeds are so tall that you can't even see it.
Yeah, because our bridge down there, during the rainy season, since the weeds weren't cut, the weeds will stop the water. People think I'm crazy when I say that, but I used to mow for the county, and if you didn't mow them weeds and we had a big rain, them weeds would deter that water, and it would go across the road, it would flood your driveway. Our ditch would get so full, it would flood our yard because the ditch wasn't cleaned out. And that's, that's my, our main complaint is, we keep paying taxes, they get higher, we keep buying new equipment, and I talked to one of the equipment operators, and he said, well, we're not doing it because we can't afford the fuel. Well, if you can't afford the fuel, why are you buying new equipment?
You got wrong information.
Well, I may have, but that's what I stole.
Please, go ahead and give your name, as we've asked, for the clerk and for the press.
Well, I'm Tim Hatfield, this is Kathy Hatfield.
And Ross, I think you were interrupted. Did you have something else to-
I'd like to say, I don't know how they have them set up as far as who grades what roads. My road grader, I like him, don't fire him. Give him a raise. So I don't know who's doing mine for sure right now, but I like him.
Does he grade your road?
Fairly, at least, at least every two weeks. Mine gets done.
See, we very seldom see a road grader.
Maybe once a month at the top.
But that's right around neutral. I don't know.
Oh, well.
I mean, so whoever's on that one, I like him.
So another compliment, thank you.
As far as, you know, and all this taxes and stuff, a lot of us talking about wages and stuff, and a lot of that's compared to the counties around us. If you guys look at percentages, we're probably a higher percentage on some of our wages because the tax revenue is so much higher in those counties. And I don't, I mean, I would love to pay all of our guys a lot more, there's no doubt. And, you know, some of our good workers, and the higher you pay, the better workers generally you're going to get. But to get that same pay level, we're having to pay out a higher percentage of our budget to those workers. So when you guys figure that in, you'll kind of take that into consideration, you know, they're dealing off a whole lot bigger budget than what you guys have to do. So to say their wages may not be the dollar per hour theirs is, is not to say that the percentage of ours isn't a higher percentage of our budget already. So you might just take that into consideration with that, too. I mean, I'd like to see every one of them make more money, for sure.
They already did.
Yep. And so where are we at percentage-wise? Are we ahead, honestly, in the percentage?
Well, like evaluations and stuff?
Well, I just mean like, let's say they make, they have a four, let's say $4 million income on their tax revenue, and we only have like about a one, you know, let's say for easy numbers. You know, to get the same percentage, we'd be paying, you know, a lot higher amount.
Because our budget is so low compared to-
So I don't know what that figures out to be, but, I mean, there comes a time when to pay them those wages, you know, the only way to do it is to raise our taxes. And nobody likes that, and I agree on that 100%. But the only way to do that without raising everybody's taxes is to get more industries in here and be able to tax that at a higher rate.
I don't think anybody's going to be able to argue that we're overpaying heavy equipment operators at $17, $19 an hour.
Yep.
My name is Wally Langford Jr. My question is probably off-topic. It's tax question. I've got two properties here, a home and I bought the old Spencer Schoolhouse. It's badly dilapidated. And my question is, how do, how does the county evaluate, like, both of my properties were raised $25,000 in amounts of their being taxed, and one of the properties was broken to and vandalized, this school. And so the value really depreciated over its already poor condition over the course of the last two years, but how do you evaluate it being improved when it actually went down in value?
That's a, you said it in the very beginning, Wally, that is a question for the appraiser's office, the process. Typically, they go by comparable sales, and we know that, we know that, we know that there are not enough sales in this county to have-
Right.
-a very good database for similar properties to compare to your property.
Especially a school.
It's difficult, yeah. Our previous appraiser, well, I think it was back with Mark Dixon, said typically when people appeal their taxes, more than 50% usually get an adjustment in their pay. Some things need to be brought to their attention.
Well, they adjust it.
They don't go inside, and there's very few comparable sales, but I have found this office very, very cooperative as far as, I mean, they're not going to bend the rules to make you happy, but-
Right. I just-
They're open to information.
I was just wanting to ask the question of how they did the, like, do they use Google Earth to do it? Because a couple of years ago, I did go ahead and file to get it lowered because they were charging us like $2,000 a year for building that was unusable, you know? And it looked like they may have actually not ever looked at the building to see there's no roof on it.
I think it's once every four years that they have to, like state statute, go out and do a physical on the property. They just look around as best they can. We've had some situations that they might have been put in danger because of dangerous animals or-
Right.
-a taxpayer that didn't want them there, that, you know, okay, we're going to get off the property. But that's all they've been allowed to do, is go and take measurements and pictures. But if you have concerns about it being overpraised, talk to that office.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anybody else?
I want to readdress the machinery and equipment issue again. It's $553,000. Is that divided by three road graders and the preventative maintenance plans that you have purchased for those, or does that include other maintenance as well? It's just a line item, but it's not an itemization of where that money's supposed to be allocated.
Are you on the equipment?
Yeah. It's 53079, line item number-
And the amount is?
It's $553,000.
That is for the, and that's, that's not enough money there, as we said a few minutes ago.
Okay, I understand that. But I was wondering, can you itemize where this money is going? Not just a line item.
That money is going to the greater lease program.
100% of the 500?
No, not 100%.
Okay, that's what I'm asking for. Can you break that down into-
They don't know when they're going to need to replace a, whatever, a backhoe or-
I guess I disagree with some of that in principle, in the fact that if you have purchased a preventative maintenance plan, that means that every so many hours or so many miles, something should be serviced. So you should be able to provide me with an itemization of how many hours are going to be, that equipment's going to be operated before it gets serviced. And then is this just for the road graders, or is it for the dump trucks? Is it for the trucks that drive around and inspect the roads? This is just a general bucket, and I believe that if you're going to put a half a million dollars into a bucket, you should be able to provide us, the taxpayers, with a better list of where you estimate this money will go. Whether it's a full amount that you need or not is irrelevant. It's where is this money going to go? Because we have some people claiming that their roads aren't maintained, so why are we paying for maintenance on equipment that's not being maintained?
You're right.
We have other people that complain that they can't get down their roads, so the equipment must not be being used to fix those roads. We have one individual who said his road's great, so we know that grader needs to be serviced on a more frequent basis. But in my business, when I submit a budget to our corporate facility, they say, I want to know how much you're planning to spend on capital equipment. I want to know how much you're planning to spend on research and development. I want to know how much you're spending on this, and they've made me list this. There is nothing here to answer the question for us. If we had better details, there might be less resistance to this amount.
To partially answer the beginning of your question, the graders are the only thing that's under my understanding of, under a warranty plan right now, maintenance?
So there's, all the graders are in that, plus the maintenance in that. There's also a new dump truck that's on a lease program that has maintenance that's on that. There's also an enterprise program that has five, five pickups on it that kind of that. So yeah, it's, it's a big, a bigger picture. No, it's not just road graders.
So apparently you have that detail, you're just not willing to provide it?
Pardon?
Do you have, can you, can he, you just, you just listed off an itemization where money's- I think that would be beneficial to us here.
Those are the things that people want to see, and that's what we present.
Those are all going to have, you know, schedules of maintenance.
We spend months up here going through all that with a fine tooth to comb. I mean, you're more than welcome to come to all of them.
I think if you just published it, it would be beneficial to us whether we come or not. I mean, this-
And every time we publish, it costs more money.
Can I speak to a few of these things?
Absolutely.
So I battle misinformation more than anything, in my opinion. I'm Cody Zook at Roden Bridge. I'm superintendent of Roden Bridge. You're asking about the grader payment. I don't know on that paper, I don't know what paper you're referencing. I worked this out with the clerk's office this morning. What I saw being presented publicly on Facebook was incorrect numbers. 300 of the increase in the equipment line item, machinery and equipment, which I believe is 79, goes, pays for half of the yearly lease payment for the graders. Whenever we made the Sani purchase, we bought 10 graders, a loader, and with those 11 pieces of equipment, all the filters for the life of that machine under warranty were purchased then. So as far as the upkeep and such goes, that's all included, other than employee time to change the oil and the actual oil itself. It's already budgeted in. Whenever we made that purchase, I'd went and done all the research. We were spending $489,000 a year for the old equipment that we had. That's why that was done, so then we could get under warranty and such. Whenever we're talking about roads not getting maintained, Ross's road and the road she commented on about Star Road, that's the same grader operator. It's just the increased traffic. They've already, I heard you guys talk about that with the EPA deal. That is already a battle. I heard, is it 21st that goes up to 90th?
Yes, 21st Street.
EPA contacted me, said that they were done. All we have is their word right now that they're going to reimburse the county. We just went over there and laid asphalt over the areas that are affected. I still have to put that, give them the bill for that. They said, again, that's all we have right now, is they said that they are going to reimburse that. That will get reimbursed. I heard mowing talking. Somebody mentioned a mower that was just set. The guy's on vacation. Guys with county jobs, that's one benefit. They don't get good pay, they get good, they get good benefits. They have to take their vacation. We started an asphalt crew this year. Asphalt crew at the minimum takes seven of my regular employees. That means that unless we're going to increase the budget in the salary line item to add a bunch more employees without getting up with the cost of living with other employers paying the same type of work more, which, then you lose good employees, you'd have to add more to the salary line item, you'd have to add the equipment, whatever it may be, to support those people. We added the asphalt paver because asphalt paving is one of the most expensive things nowadays. Not only the trucking, but the actual, the laying. I think it was $10 a yard, or $10 a ton last time that we were paying. Now we're saving all that money, and we're doing it ourselves, and we're doing it the most cost-efficient way we can. So with that being said, some of the mowers, like I have an extra mower that's pulled behind, it gets, that guy might have to go help with asphalt crew that day, unless we're going to add way more to my budget. And I would argue that in 2008, if you look back, I think the Roden Bridge budget was $3.8 million. Last year, I think it was $3.8 million, something like that.
3.156.
No, that's this year, the year before.
3.826.
Okay, so in 2024, we were the same budget as 2008. I took over during COVID. Everything raised during COVID, everybody here knows that, I hope. We battled through all that. We have less employees, and our budget has dropped. This year, we're running on 3.1 and change. I personally think the department's doing good. I'm a taxpayer, too. I don't want to waste your money. Everybody talks about no equipment and such. Yes, there's no equipment, but with that comes a warranty. The goal is to less breakdowns. The goal is to less breakdowns, the, the equipment's running more often. Heard ditching talk, I agree, all the ditches need ditched, there's ninety percent of our county that needs ditched. I'm in agreeance with that. Every day, I have two excavators either ditching or putting in culverts. The only time they're not ditching is whenever they're putting in a culvert. I feel we've done more ditching in four years than has been done way prior to that. Although you might not see it.
And so, not in our area.
Not in our area.
Where, yeah?
Swally Avenue.
Yeah, Swally Avenue.
North Swally.
North Swally.
North one sixty-six on Swally.
And, and, and I heard somebody else talk about, talking to the secretary about Moe. Uh, six two oh three one seven one one five three is Roden Bridge number. With that, if you press number one, you get Joni, the secretary. Two, I believe.
I believe me, I've talked to her and she's.
Oh yeah, well, if you press six, you talk to me. But it's designed, so I got an east guy and a west guy that's road formans. So if you're on the west side, you hit Sean Shipman's number, which is, I believe he's two and I think Junior's three. I might be, might have those two swapped around, but Junior's on the east side, Sean's on the west side. You hit them, they should be able to handle your needs. If they're not handling your needs, then you call, then you hit number six, which is me. You can also access Knox's suite through that number. You don't have to talk to, you don't have to hit extension one if extension one can't handle your issue. Like, if it's a road issue, like Joni does a great job trying to handle all the calls she gets, 'cause she's also got other duties. But if it's a ditching issue or a mowing issue, um, southwest tenth and Beasley, you know, you hit Sean's extension. And if he doesn't help you out, then you hit number six and you let me know about it and I check into that. Find out, I'm not arguing that there's less mowing being done, 'cause there is less mowing being done. We're gonna get caught up and then it's gonna be, you know, back to normal, that's the goal.
Okay, but why does the great, the, the cutter drive up and down the road not doing anything, which is a waste of fuel to me?
Yeah, that would be a waste of fuel if he was, if he's just driving around not doing anything, but I would argue that. Like, we have an online app, I can see where my brush cutters are at all times.
But you said he was on vacation.
To.
Okay, there's been nothing, there's been nothing mowed in our area all summer.
I would ar, I would argue that.
I can show you that.
Okay, well, three one seven one one five three, extension six, we can set up a time, we can go look at those issues. But I'm telling you, he's mowing, every day that he's at work, he's mowing.
He's not mowing.
I don't know what, what area he covers.
Well, that's, if you're not getting your road mowed, uh, I will let him know, like, hey, make sure you put this on your list. He's got, I don't know how many miles, but he's got a lot of miles. We bought the two mowers because the tractor mounted mowers are such a small deck and then there's so much breakdown and so much upkeep. A John Deere tractor with a boom mower on it's the highest maintenance item you can have, it's high.
I hope that this is the brand new one.
Yeah, I don't know, but I'm saying, he travels, he's got the entire southeast and he's got the southwest for, I think to Seventieth. So he's got all those extra miles, because those have so much longer arms, we're trying to help everybody with the overhanging brush as well. That's, we're trying to get rid of the John Deere, the expensive items, you can talk to either one of them operators. We got two of them running with the John Deere side mounted boom mowers. And you can ask them how much they're broke down to how much they're running. And most of the time, they're broke down more than they're running, they have, most of them tractors have like ten thousand hours on them.
They ran one for fifteen, eighteen years.
The one that you used.
And I know exactly what's going on. And there, you each have your certain area, like you said. And we had to keep that mowed, and we were told, mow to the crops, to the fences. If there wasn't crops or fences, as far as you could reach. And then we had to top the fences where the trees were growing. None of that's being done in our area, nothing.
The farmers are having to mow their, bush hog their own ditches out there.
I, I, I mow my own right away, so I don't, I have a different feeling on that part, but I'm talking on Roden Bridge's part. That mower has a lot of miles to go and he's trying to go help you and he's trying to go, which you're saying he's not helping you, but the whole goal is so you can go help you and he can help them and he can help them. Trying to get one path over it.
I understand that.
And the safety of the intersection, safety of the intersection is the number one priority. Our number one priority is safety.
Okay, what about, I was gonna live in the city, I mean, my taxes go up for all this, and I'm in the city. I'm in Baxter Springs, my name's Tim Postal, I'm in Baxter Springs, Kansas. My taxes go up four hundred every year.
Sir, would you give your name for the?
I did, Tim Postal.
Okay, sir.
And, uh, I, I don't understand that, uh, I, I don't, don't get me wrong, I'd be wanting to help, to help these people if it's getting done, if it's not getting done, you're, you're wasting my money.
That's true.
And, uh, you know, when you get ready to retire, like some of these people probably already are, why, why should they have to even pay personal property taxes? Once you hit a certain age, I don't believe that you should have to pay any personal property taxes.
Well, that's a, an argument that's shared by a lot of people, but is on the state level and, um, a good conversation with our state
Who's that?
Representative, um, our state representative is in the hallway and our state senator is Tim Schellberger.
Are they the ones that, that take care of the personal property taxes?
Oh, he's hiding behind his shirt.
I mean, are they the ones that take care of the personal property taxes and all that?
Not on a local level, but the pro, program that you just, uh, proposed, that would have to be done by the state legislature to change that. But if your taxes are going up substantially every year, have you appealed or talked to the appraisers office to see why? To see whether, because our middle area has stayed pretty level for several years until this year, it caught up with us. But if it is, it's because evaluation is coming up. And we do know that evaluation has come up a lot in the last three, three years.
Okay, but why, why is it going up on my house when I'm repairing it?
For the appraiser, I'm sorry, I can't.
Well, have you visited with your city or your schools? 'Cause I mean, we just control the county tax, we don't control the school tax, we don't control township tax, we don't control city tax. I mean, those are other taxing entities that can raise or millify it, which would impact you.
We send the bill, but as Corey points out, our, our portion, depending on where you live, is, well, not depending on that, but depending on, yeah, because of your school district, your township, if you're not in a incorporated area.
Your city.
Our part's gonna be anywhere from thirty, I'm gonna say thirty-six to thirty-nine percent of your bill. And depending on the district you're in, it's gonna be, their part's gonna be anywhere from, um, maybe thirty to forty percent.
Okay, I don't have kids in school.
Pardon?
I don't have kids in school.
They don't matter.
I've never had kids in.
I mean, I, I, I wouldn't mind paying, paying a little bit for school taxes and stuff, but not help thirty percent.
But the questions you're asking right now really belong to the appraisers office downstairs or Mr. Hellway right behind you. Does anybody else have a question about the revenue neutral rate that we're about, go ahead?
I do, my name's Nick Jordan and I, I kinda understand, that was gonna be kind of my question about that, is people on fixed incomes. I mean, I heard that, where I work, sometimes I won't tell you who, 'cause it's not a concern, but their evaluations keep going up, keep going up, and they go every year for the property that we live at. And then our income doesn't go up that much. You know, if you get a rate increase of about four hundred dollars, and I know part of it's county, part of it's school, I get that. But, you know, I mean, what percentage is that overall? Probably thirteen or fourteen percent, I think they went up this year, everything altogether, um, the particular house. My social security didn't go up that much, not even near that. I mean, and that's something I felt needed to be addressed, but you kinda gave me an avenue back there. I know we're not Arkansas, but my little sister lives in Arkansas, she's getting ready to retire. I think they took the rate for the last ten years, the lowest rate they paid in my previous tenure, don't hold me to that. But that's what they pay for the rest of their life, because they're on a fixed income, they realize that. As a county, you can't address that? You couldn't say, hey, well, this is what we're gonna do, we're the county commissioners, this is what we're gonna do within our county? Not available to.
Our protocol has established that statute. And I agree with you, Nick, it's disheartening to think about retired people having to think about where they're going to live because of.
And I mean, and they, they bought their homes, some of them, they've lived in their own for generations. And, you know, and you're, you're renting from the county basically, and the school for strictly, uh, staying, but still, I mean.
Not trying to pass a buck, but that's not within our hands. Anybody else have a question?
Lila Sweeney, and I, like you, we've been in our house for fifty-five years, we built it ourselves. We haven't spent anything to it for at least twenty years, we've been retired for over twenty years. And, and our taxes keep going up, I mean, they're gonna tax us out of our house because the taxes keep going up. And the road, speaking of roads, our road has not been maintained for years. There's grass growing between, it was, it was blacktopped about, I don't know, thirty years ago or something. But, but nothing's been done out there, nothing at all. And, and we aren't doing anything to our house, we're just trying to live in peace, you know? 'Cause we're eighty-five years old. And, and our taxes keep going up. And I, and I agree with you that there should be something for people that are older and are retired for that many years and are living on a fixed income.
I think we're gonna empty out a room and Dale, let you have your little session.
I'd be glad to visit with the backboard.
Dale, would you just step in just a second? Because there are a lot of people who don't know our state representative, but I'm fortunate that he cares enough about our community. Of course, he's a taxpayer.
Might wanna stand behind your chair.
To, um, be accessible, I'll say that. You call Dale, you're gonna get him, you may not get him, but he'll call you back, he's very accessible, so, there's your man.
I won't, I won't.
Is one we wanna talk to you.
Yeah, I'd be glad to talk to you afterwards, this is the revenue neutral rate hearing, so, but on the state taxes, I'd be glad to visit with you.
Okay, thank you, Dale, anybody else have any questions? Go ahead.
This one's hard for me because I really support our law enforcement, but the sheriff's budget went up a half a million dollars.
What are you looking at?
The sheriff's budget went up a half a million dollars. Is, is, is there, can they explain some of that?
Sheriff, you wanna explain some of your reasons?
Uh, yes, so part of what we, your biggest increase you're gonna see is the vehicles. Uh, several years ago, they entered into the enterprise, uh, lease program to, um, pay for our vehicles, but the money wasn't added over the years, so this brought into the fact we had to bring that up this year to the, we had to do it all at once rather than where it should have been done over the past few years. So that was your biggest ones. Um, some of the things you're gonna see there is salaries. Uh, we put out that we've added our FTO, or, I'm sorry, not FTO, our TFO for the FBI task force officer position. So salaries, we get mandated, we get, um, overtime from the, from the federal government that, for that position. So that was added into salaries to pay for the overtime for that FBI, FBI task force officer position.
So you're saying they pay for it, but it's in our budget?
Yeah, we have to budget so we can spend it and then they, they reimburse it back to us. So if we don't budget for it, we can't spend it. So, uh, just because money's in a budget doesn't mean that money's there, doesn't mean that you got three million dollars that you just get to go spend no matter what, it still has to be moneyed. So, um, and then the other is, uh, one of the increases you see there was for our school resource officers. Uh, we, we get money from the school districts to pay for our school resource officers, but the county was funding that, so we had to put that in our budget so that we could then get that reimbursement from our school resource, or from the schools. So we get that money from the schools that goes in, so part of that increase you're seeing is to cover these, uh, new positions we're adding in to, uh, it didn't increase our number of officers per se, but it's a way for us to be able to fund, um, the things going on. So what other specific questions would you have?
I don't understand, if, if the school's paying for the school resource officer, is that not in their budget? Why is it in here?
We have to get the money, we have to pay for it, it comes out of our budget, so they give us money for it, so they're reimbursing us.
So, yeah, they're reimbursing you, so I, why is it in?
So what you're saying, Lori, is if he's budgeting a thousand dollars for a resource officer
Uh huh.
and the, and he spends that thousand dollars and he bills the school for a thousand dollars and they paying for a thousand dollars. So there's a thousand dollars that is floating somewhere that.
Is that in the school's budget also?
Yeah, because.
Why is it in two budgets?
Because we have to have it if we're gonna spend it, we have to have that ahead of time if we're gonna.
That doesn't make sense.
Does it go back to the general fund after you've reimbursed that money?
It goes back into our, our budget that we're budgeting for our salaries.
And so. I get that for the first year, that makes kinda sense, you have that budget there, but then you get reimbursed for that, how would that affect service? The next year, you should still have that money from last year that you charged.
And it keeps, yeah, it keeps circling back in, and that's where we're trying to get is we're, 'cause we're behind. And, I mean, we're, we're trying to bring ourselves to a neutral rate of where the sheriff's office was and where, what was being spent. We're being forthcoming, I'm taking the hit by coming forward, forward to you as citizens of what the sheriff's office has been doing behind the scenes. Uh, last year, we was, uh, sheriff's office was over budget by almost a half a million dollars. We're basically going neutral of where it is, I'm taking the hit from you as citizens to bring us to where we wanna be open to you all. And so, um, that's where we're at, I mean, I'll be honest with you, and that's what we're doing. I'm just trying to be honest and we're, and we wanna be within our budget where it's at, not be behind, uh, scenes, not be behind doors of, of you all not knowing what's going on. So this is what we need to, yes, sir?
I, I wanted to clarify, Brian, on the issue about the, the double.
Yeah.
Basically, what, looks like double dipping, right?
It does.
Gene, I'm sure will correct me if I'm wrong about any of this. So for the county to spend any money, it has to be budgeted, right?
Right.
Right, we have to put that into a budget to spend it. And we don't necessarily tax for all of the money that has been budgeted, correct?
But you are.
Right, so.
No.
No.
This isn't part, what your taxing is for?
No.
You have to have it in there for spending, if it's not in there, you cannot spend.
Right, so the, the school has to budget to reimburse the county and the county has to budget to pay the officer. But that money is then factored back into, what do you call it, uh, reimbursements and.
Charges.
Yeah, other than the revenues section, that money comes back in. So we're not taxing to collect that money that we're paying out. Does that make sense?
No, but, you know, I think governmental accounting.
We do the same thing.
We have multiple income sources, like our income doesn't all come from taxes, right?
Okay.
So we can't, we can't spend money unless we budget.
So this isn't coming from our tax?
You, no, you're not necessarily being taxed for that at the county level, you're being taxed for that at the
School.
the school district level, you're not being double taxed for it, it's showing up again as a revenue on the county's books because that money gets paid into the county to offset the expense that you got.
Okay.
And we do the same thing with inmate services.
Correct.
You know, we house inmates for the state, other counties, so on and so forth, we have to budget for it and we have to spend it.
Okay.
But then we bill and get reimbursed.
And that's not part of our tax?
No, they offset each other, but one shows up as a revenue and the other shows up as an expense and they net out to zero.
Okay.
I think we're all in agreement that nobody likes tax increases and they're, I know they're hard to swallow, but you just have to find a balance, we can have the best roads that we wanna have if we're willing to pay for them.
Let you go.
I was thinking on the drive here, if we had Leonard Banana here and every commissioner that's sat here for the last thirty years, I'm sure if we asked, what year did you not get just bombarded with complaints about roads? Nobody could tell you, um, a year, I mean, that's always, we can do better and it's always, um, what we're striving to do, but, again, we can have, we can have what we want if we wanna pay for them, we're just trying to find balance. This year, pretty well caught up with this because of the, um, spending of resources in the past, um, out of equipment reserve and, and the general, um, fund, but we're at a point where it's kinda hitting us, so I think everybody's pretty well spoke, is there anybody that feels compelled to make another comment?
We're looking at it next year, 'cause we're, you, it should be, right now, you should be looking at twenty twenty-seven. I heard that we have ten road graders, and that seems to be the hot topic, is road graders. We have ten road graders that were purchased that didn't live up to the expectations of quality. So you're systematically replacing those ten road graders, correct? And you started with the first three this year, is that correct?
There's been a rollout planned from the very beginning, whether we systematically stay with Caterpillar.
I'm not asking, that's not where I'm going, like, what I'm going is.
They're gonna reevaluate every time it's time for rollout, they're gonna get bids, they're gonna get input from Roden Bridge on the performance of the previous equipment. So we're not gonna plan twenty twenty-seven today, no, sir.
Well, I, I think that we should consider twenty twenty-seven if we're gonna be fiscally responsible, and that's what most people in this room are asking for, is fiscal responsibility. You didn't let me finish my question, you interrupted me. And my question was going to be, is my understanding correct, you have ten road graders that didn't live up to their quality expectation? No?
That's incorrect.
Okay, Corey, you said there was ten, I was quoting ten from Corey, so how many do you have?
There's, we have ten graders.
Okay.
Not all ten have not led up to that expectation. Whenever we purchase those ten, because my feeling with any new equipment, everything has depth fluid, diesel exhaust fluid, across the board, it's that. I didn't wanna have any equipment there that had that system, which is, I don't know, whether two thousand eight newer, I don't, I don't know the dates, but any of that stuff newer that didn't have a warranty to cover it in case any of those problems arise. We went with these ten graders because it allowed us to get out of that costly repair of the old fleet that we had without having to put the same amount. It was gonna cost the same amount to rebuild one of the original graders as it was to get these new ones with the filters and with the warranty.
Okay.
So that's what we assessed, and then I, with the.
And then I, with the board, decided Caterpillar, one thing about it is whenever you swap brands, it makes the different brands competitive. You're talking about next year, next year, it's not an issue. It's, it, this is the three-year mark that we talked about two years or three years ago with this board, whenever we decided to have a rollout plan. There was three on a three-year plan, three on a five-year plan. So it'll be twenty twenty-eight before that comes up again. Unless, like this time, the Caterpillar, due to the fact of us going with a different brand, made Caterpillar step up to the table and give us a competitive price. So now, yes, are Caterpillar graders better? In my opinion, yes, they are, but you pay a lot more for it. They've gotten competitive this time, that's why we want the Cater.
And I'm completely fine with the, the, the choice of your brand, you could, with Kamatu, I think Kamatu's a high-quality brand as well.
We have a bid from them.
I think you could have went with Ingersoll Rand or Bla Knox, whichever they're called this year. But where I'm looking at it is, if you've got a number of road graders that you're gonna phase out, so you're, you're, you bought three Caterpillars, so you phased three out, you've got six more.
Seven.
Seven more that at some point you're considering phasing out. How are we preparing today, you commissioners, how are you preparing today to pay for the phase out, which you've got, you said twenty twenty-eight, so he's got some coming in twenty twenty-eight? Are we gonna see a half a million dollar increase in our taxes to pay for those? Or are we looking today at, how can we amortize or how can we compensate today to, so that when it comes up, the people on fixed incomes or the people in cities that don't see any benefit from this are not going to be upset because we've already taken this into account to pay for those, we start today, we don't start. You've had, you had an issue where people weren't thinking about today two years ago and now you're having to take a beating because of what you're doing today. Same thing for you. You're having to take a beating today because of what somebody didn't think about there for eight years ago. I'm saying, that was my point, are we going to think about to, tomorrow, today? It's like, do you untie your shoes tonight so you don't have to in the morning? That's all I was wanting to ask, what is the plan?
Answer to your question is equipment reserve. Right now, there's a billion forty-some dollars in it and what is, what is set aside?
For what now?
Equipment reserve.
We usually budget six hundred thousand for equipment reserve. So I answer your question, we've been working on that for the last five or six years to build that up, cause when I got in here, we didn't have any reserves. We worked on building that up. Well, on the ways we've been able to keep the middle levy down, we've been tapping those reserves to keep the middle levies down. So in twenty-eight, there's money in there, budgets back to equipment reserve to help offset that when it comes in twenty twenty-eight.
Right now, three hundred thousand of that, we know will be coming out next year of that, but yet we'll be putting more in, so.
And, can I say one more thing to that?
Sure.
In twenty twenty-four, our budget was three point eight million dollars. Road and Bridge was making that payment all out of Road and Bridge, no special equipment reserve, no general fund, none of that. That's what was designed, cause Road and Bridge is what brought that to the table. So that's how it was going. In twenty twenty-five, Road and Bridge submitted a, our proposal for our budget. It was for three point eight million dollars, no rates, that's what we submitted. Later on, I found out it was three point one, like play the hand that's helped, that's given to me. They had discovered that it was gonna get paid out of the equipment reserve. So now, I don't know about your tax increase, I'm a taxpayer too, I don't wanna, I don't wanna increase, I would rather have less. But Road and Bridge, our department, is battling to try to get it back up to what we've already made plans for. So although it's showing an increase now, we're still not up to our twenty twenty-four number. So as far as my department goes, I'm not speaking for anybody else's department, you see it as a raise and I understand that. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm still down where I should have been asking for a cost of living just because of the cost of everything. Everybody's cost going up for everything, so was ours. I'm fine with staying, I submitted for the same. I would rather make our department more efficient and everything. And whenever you spoke on facts, you can call me anytime, I can get you the accounts payable, you can see what we're spending on that fleet at any time. I'm happy to answer facts, there's so many, the social media, there's so much misinformation. You can always call me and one, what I do on Mondays is I try not to give these commissioners any information that I can't back up with these papers in some way or a witness or whatever, whatever the situation is, to show a fact. Cause you can listen to whoever at the coffee shop or whoever's Facebook posting on, but I'm offering, I'm offering facts. So if you want facts, Bill, go.
I'll give one last call, we've been here a little over an hour on the hearing.
I just wanted to thank you for working so hard on this, cause I know it's hard.
Thank you.
I've seen you walking out of meetings with piles of books. And I wanted to bring everyone's attention to also the fact that we're in Baxter Springs School District. If you look at the increase in the Baxter Springs Schools' budget, it's double what the county's doing. So the schools are asking for a lot of money.
River was three percent more than the county had.
Well, just on our home alone, my county portion went up, Baxter Springs Schools went up double what our county portion went up. So it's not just the county, a big portion of it is the schools. And I love the schools, I do, but they need to be held accountable also, so. And I think I can get copies of that up here, can I, of their budget, or where do you go for that?
That was listed on the tax thing, where you can go.
There's a meeting.
There's meetings for all that.
Baxter School Meeting, uh, School Board Meeting is the second Thursday of the month.
Yeah.
But I, I, yeah, I don't, I need to start being more involved.
The entire county budget, what the entire county operates on is millions and millions of dollars less than one school district.
I know.
I, I would, I would encourage all of you to really look.
Be more involved.
It will, it will blow your mind.
And see, we live in the country and we don't always get involved with what's going on in Baxter. And so, I'm going to.
Thank you for the compliment, I would appreciate that. Through with comments, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty-five to increase the revenue neutral rate.
So do you have a?
Second motion, all those in favor, and we need to do the fiscal call, yes. Corey?
Aye.
Jack?
Are we voting on the budget right now?
No, the revenue neutral rate to raise it, but it's gonna be for the budget numbers, but follow. Your vote is what?
I'm voting against right now.
Is, could I, uh, jump for a reason, Jake? Abstain?
Yeah, I think you can, uh, today, you have to vote on it.
Is it an extension?
Yeah, there's a no vote on the roll call here.
Okay.
Okay, so it'll go no, or, okay, I'm gonna vote yes and that will go with the yes, right? Because, no, Jordan, but we have two yeses and one abstain and a motion for a yes.
We should work out today.
The budget hearing is for the very same number of just a high value.
Well, I'm sorry, but we're still in session here, I'm sorry, commission is still in session, if we could kinda keep it down for commission purposes.
You can go, you can leave.
So are there any comments on the budget hearing? Again, the very same numbers we just went over. No questions? Didn't anticipate, cause we just went over all this. So we will close the budget hearing and I would entertain a motion to approve twenty twenty-six budget. I salute. Motion in a second. So Corey Roca, Jack?
Aye.
Myra, yes, so carry two to one. And now, back in a second moment, we are on to our special steward district. Special steward district, Terry, anyone here on that? So, close the steward district hearing and entertain a motion, a motion to approve that. Have a motion from Corey, in a second from Jack, to the special steward district, twenty twenty-six budget. Corey? Myra, aye. Just need to sign that? Or nothing to sign? Does anybody have any other business?
I would just like to say real quick, um, this is my ninth year and I think this is the second time the taxes have been raised at a Cherokee County level. Otherwise, they've been cut in some years as much as nineteen mils, which is dramatic. Anytime I vote to raise any taxes, extremely hard, especially on my part and on my fellow commissioners, but I can guarantee you, there's no other board, probably, I would say in the country, that doesn't work harder than this board right here on the taxes of Cherokee County. There's lots and lots of errors, weeks is put into this, a lot of late nights, so thank you, hope you.
But like, like Corey issued out there too, uh, the schools, you all need to pay attention to the schools. Their, their own identity and that's where the biggest, that's where your increase on your taxes, not so much this year, but your schools. And I invite them, on the, next time we have a hearing, I like to invite the superintendents to come up there and explain to you people just how much they go into that, your taxes are involved in that. Even if, even if you don't have kids in school, if you're in that district, you're still paying taxes.
They have hearings and they have more comfortable seating.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Go to your local school boards when they have their hearings.
They're a hearing meeting.
I think they're all coming up.
Well, thank you all for coming out and taking time off work and being up here today.
Meeting Friday?
Friday, eight AM.
No meeting next Monday, Labor Day, I suppose.
Send me an email and tell them about this Friday at eight AM. Sticky though, yeah.